Okay, six o'clock just called meeting to order. Thinking the devil, since he come in late, he can start us on a pledge.
I'm trying to mind. I'm like a lady. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. You can see that. Okay, roll call, whenever you get ready, buddy.
Brown.
Yes.
Hamley.
Yes.
Lumber.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Okay, public forum, nobody signed up, community affairs, don't think we got anything under community affairs tonight, so we got meeting minutes, they're in your packet there, if you had a chance to look them over, if you see any discrepancies or any corrections need to be made, mention now, or I will entertain the motion to approve the minutes of our October twentieth meeting as per recorded. Mr. Hamley. Ms. Carleen.
Richardson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Brown.
I've seen.
Hamley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Lumber.
Yes.
Okay. Officer reports, Jeremy, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Looking for approval of the October twenty twenty five bills paid, two million four hundred two thousand eight hundred and five dollars and forty-five cents, look on that sheet approval report on the right there, there was one point five million that was just moved from one bank to another to close some accounts out.
We didn't really have that much of experience, it was just transfer funds, so, but it's gotta be recorded that way, as such, so. Any questions with the, uh, with the, uh, bill payments for October, if not, motion to approve as recorded? Ms. Lawrence, second please.
Second.
Ms. Marcy, be ready, buddy.
Wilson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hamley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Lumber.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I got.
That's all you had? Okay, Gail, ma'am, you have the floor.
I need approval of the October treasurer's collection report totaling five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
Any questions on any of those as we speak? If not, approve the treasurer's collection report as Gail has, uh, recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, second please.
Mr. Hamley.
Brown.
Uh, yes.
Hamley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Lumber.
Yes.
Richardson.
That, is the number wrong?
Should I have it wrong?
Five fifty-seven, seven twenty-six, five seventy-eight.
Whatever's on the shackle sheet, the copy.
This one?
Yes.
And we got a discrepancy on the back.
On the agenda.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying.
I probably left the wrong month when I put it on the agenda, so.
The report's right, the, the, the agenda's wrong.
Yeah, five fifty-seven, seven twenty-six, fifty-four.
My second's the report.
And yes, okay. Wilson, Wilson.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Anything else, ma'am?
No, thank you.
I did, we did, we had CDs come due, correct, Gail? How many of them came due?
Eleven.
And those were renewed at four twenty-five?
Yes.
So, I can't remember the exact amount, is it one point six?
I believe so.
So, we got those renewed for another year at four point two five. So, we did okay there, and that interest for the ones that was due was put into corporate, Gail's got that, so we're doing what they're supposed to do, guys, and we got four a quarter for the next year, like, like, some of them was at First Neighbor, some was at, uh, was at, uh.
Preford.
Preford.
And the interest went into the funds that they were for, I don't, no, yeah, they don't all go into corporate.
I thought some, I thought some was corporate, though.
Uh, there may have been one, the majority.
Yeah, if it's an electric, if it's an electric CD, it goes into electric, then the water goes to the water, but, but, yeah, so, okay. Anything else, Gail?
Thank you.
Tracy's not here and her counterpart isn't, but we have the, we can go ahead and approve, uh, wanna, wanna discuss it and approve it?
So, first one is ordinance five ninety-two, release that reverter for three oh six Southeast First Street, so when we sold that property originally to, uh, Kim Davidson, had a reverter clause, if something wasn't built by a certain time period, we would get the property back. Of course, the house is built, it's done, so we can now release that reverter, and it's all her property now.
Yep, it's, it's job well done, taken care of, and it's rehabilitated, well, not rebuilt, it was brand new, so we're good to go there, but we have to, we have to vote on getting rid of the reverter.
Yes.
You got a question?
No, I'm listening.
Okay, okay, I, I seen that look, I'm, uh, just gonna fire something out after a second, I'll get ready, so, okay, good enough, good enough, with that being said, uh, ordinance number five nine two, authorization, authorizing the exec, the execution of the release of the reservation of the possibility of a reverter for a property of three oh six Southeast First Street, motion to approve that ordinance?
Next motion.
Ms. Marcy, a second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Tanner? When you're ready.
Hamley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Lumber.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hopefully, we have a few more of those coming not too distant future, more buildings getting built.
Next up is approval of resolution eleven zero three two five A, declaring certain real property improvements there on as being dangerous and unsafe, this is for seven oh four East Monroe.
Chief, which one is seven, which one is seven oh four, chief?
One on the north side of the park, third residence for eighth. Was mine a stove?
Okay.
I know the owners now are in Arizona, they live in Arizona, they were supposed to be fixing it up, but they did not follow through, I think that's why she's filed.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is, so, um, they don't need a motion to approve resolution one one zero three two five A, dangerous and unsafe for seven oh four East Monroe. Mr. Hamley, second, please.
I'll second.
Ms. Carleen? When you're ready.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Lumber.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hamley.
Yes.
Okay, got that one.
Next up is resolution eleven oh three two five B, so basically doing the same thing for two one nine South Central.
Which is, which one again?
It's just south.
Just south of the flats.
So, that's the big, the big two-story white house? Okay, yeah, it's a big two-story white house just south of the flats, on the west side of the road. Yeah, between it and, uh, Davis County building.
Correct. Deed is under Jaima Brewer.
Okay, so, motion to approve resolution one one zero three two five B, uh, declaring, uh, two one nine South Central Casey as dangerous and unsafe, motion, please. Ms. Lawrence, second, please.
Second.
Mr. Hamley? When you're ready.
Lumber.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Hamley.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
I think as most of you've seen, Tracy's been pretty busy, we had twenty-seven actions of court last week, so, chief, appreciate your time, definitely putting into that project and stuff, and it's making a difference, and the citizens appreciate it, I do too. Shelby's not here, but his counterpart is, so he gets to sit in and speak up, Mr. Ryan, you got the floor.
Sure, thank you, thank you.
I guess I should say Mr. Staley, not Mr. Ryan, I know you as Ryan, but it's gonna be Mr. Staley.
Your choice.
You got it, buddy.
You gotta wait a while before it really gives him a name. There you go, there you go.
I think he's already got a couple of those, Steve.
Yes, that's fair, too. So, work started on the two oh four South Central today, uh, they were on site, I'm not sure exactly what they got done, I tried to, looked like they were working around the backside, um, and prep, and preparing to, uh, move to the front of that, of the structure tomorrow, hopefully, um, stump removal around town is supposed to start this week, um, Streets Department are getting ready to pour a tow wall for the sidewalk on Main Street in front of the Maston Home, uh, that should be done, hopefully tomorrow, um, let's see, the sidewalk project on the north side of Main Street, in that same area, uh, it's scheduled, it was scheduled to start today, uh, they didn't show up, so we're hoping they'll be here tomorrow, uh, speaking of that work, and the tree removal's ongoing, um, he's a little over halfway done, he said, um, so Shelby and I will, when he says he is done, we'll obviously go through each of the trees and make sure he's got everything that was in agreement with the done.
Fast, yeah, man.
Um, we winterized the park, it's shutting off the water to it and closing down everything,
Did the boys get the bathroom by the, um, new?
Yeah.
Pickleball. Pickleball courts completed?
They, yes, floor's completed, I, um, I think it's all done, yes, I'm fairly certain.
Okay.
Uh, they got the signs for the pickleball court hung today.
Okay.
They got the skateboard, skate park stuff moved back onto the skate park, um.
I noticed we got the barricades up.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do have a little repair work to do, and we was moving some stuff and whatnot, got, paint got scratched up a little bit, but, yeah, and I know Jeremy has contacted, um, Nico and Cracks Coats, and they're gonna come in the spring and eliminate some of those low spots with the water legs, it wasn't the most given for, but it needs to, it's easily correct, it just has to have some decent weather to do it, so we're ahead of it.
We've got a couple of those, I'm sorry, on the path, too.
Yeah.
A couple of low spots.
You got a plot of them on the city streets. I didn't know pickleball didn't have, uh, what do you call them? Chocks? My wife yesterday, oh, I'll come back, give me office, man.
Let me interrupt, go ahead.
No, you're fine, um, but other than that, they did start the lights for the park, uh, the electrical department's helping those guys out.
For the pickleball courts, or the?
No, for the Christmas lights.
Okay, I know they're working on the, they're still painting, they was painting the poles and whatnot for pickleball courts, they're, they're trying to get that ready, so they can put them on.
Correct, yep, that's all need to be done by the end of the year, um, and so, but Christmas lights are kinda taking press in it right now.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Well, it's nice to get them.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you know what's gonna happen there not too long.
Ah, so I think that's about it for me, though, thank you.
Him and Shelby did go down, and I think the, the entire utility crew go through the building the other day, I said all of them go through it.
Most of them, yeah.
And they are, did you, I didn't know that.
They moved separately.
Separately, yeah, yeah.
They are very excited about moving into that building, and according to Shelby and Ryan, you know, it's, uh, trying to be ideal for us, keep everything in one location and whatnot, and, uh, I have talked to a couple of banks, and they've assured me that there's enough with the, um, appraisal value to be able to work with, I mean, anything we want for, um, I don't wanna say remodel, but modifications to make at the worst part of your era for a while, so, as soon as we get, and hopefully that'll be at our next meeting, we can vote on the purchase of, they had a little trouble with the wordings on the deed or names on the deed, but I think that got, is in the process of getting corrected, I'm hoping to have it done, so we can put a vote on purchase of at the next meeting and get started moving forward, uh, with that, and that'll, 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 that's a godsend, that's a very, very good move on our, on our part to take care of that. Anything else, bud?
You got to do it for me, thank you.
Chief, you got the floor, sir?
Uh, just a few quick updates on the ordinances, so, like you said, a lot of the court dates, um, they will have a new status hearing or show payment, whatever it is, November twenty-six was a lot of them, um, I spoke to Leanne today, she's, I'm not sure that they're a hundred percent done with the moving, but she said most of them are probably getting pretty close, so she'll be sending off the last invoices, if not paid, we'll be following through the liens, um, six oh four Southwest First, day oh two Southwest Fourth, were demoed in the last couple of weeks, those lots was already in the cities, um, they both had trailers on, and those are cleaned up, and then he had already spoke about two oh four.
Back up a second, as far as the loan liens go? Walks through the process, send out the bills, and if the bills aren't paid, then we put out a lien?
Yeah, and once they file for a lien, and then they can pull a couple of the lien.
File the lien last month, much of the lien last month, I don't remember how many was off the top of my head.
See, I didn't know if they, some, I didn't know if they do them all at the end season, obviously, if they've already filed, and, you know, kind of periodically, but they'll be more additional, because some of the end up being paid either.
Okay.
He's made it from last year, he's not allowed.
Oh, that could be too.
I don't remember.
Well, we get on top of that, and get that, that's, those taken care of also. Officer in training coming along well?
Yes, he will graduate December first, he's got four weeks left.
Good, and then he'll have, what, eight weeks of?
Ten.
Ten weeks of, what's it called?
F D O.
F D O? Okay, good. Good, 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 I know you had, chief?
That's all I got.
Okay. Tom, sir, you have the floor?
Yes, um, just had our second open house for the comprehensive plan update tonight, so now that that's done, uh, by the end of the week, we'll be, you know, taking all of the feedback from, from there tonight, uh, the updated plan should be finalized by the end of this week, um, we've already scheduled a public hearing, uh, for two nights from tonight, I'm sorry, two weeks from tonight, uh, so at the next council meeting, in advance of that, we'll have a, a short, um, uh, public hearing for anybody to provide any final comments, and then, if there are any changes that need to be made at that point out of that meeting, it'll be finalized and ready for adoption on December first.
Okay.
Which will allow us to have a brand new, updated comprehensive plan for grant applications that are getting ready to, to come up.
Good.
Had a, a decent Halloween, I thought, um, I wanna give special recognition to Leslie Dunleavy at Simple Blessings, I think the, um, the scarecrow program went really well, uh, they raised fifteen hundred dollars for the VFW in the end.
Good.
Much needed for a good organization, and of course, a lot of our city guys helped out with getting those put up, and of course, we couldn't not recognize Mr. Lewis Spring for his man magnificent work on the city's contribution.
You get votes, that's right.
No, he got some votes, but he didn't win, unfortunately, we'll get him next year.
I do like, I do like the characterization that was on it, if I was a perfect fit, somebody would've been in the hole.
Yeah, don't take a bigger hole for it.
Look, kids, I, I have not seen, who was the, who was the scarecrow winner?
The winner was?
Thresh Store.
Thresh Store, yes.
Okay.
And then the VFW itself, I think it was third, I can't remember who was second, Pharmacy Shop? Pharmacy Shop, I think. Um, yeah, so hopefully next year it will be, uh, even bigger and better than.
Good.
Am I the only one who dodged things?
I am. Sit around the corner and die. Yeah, my heart goes, get you one of those, my God!
The strollers for me.
That one freaked, that one did freak me out, the one up there by Mike Curbsaw, yeah, that one got my attention.
I was gonna start leaning up against one of the lights at night, and you jump.
And so, thanks to David and his team, uh, for keeping everyone safe during trick-or-treating, they got up to, um, Central Park very quickly afterwards, so the Patty Richards, who's here today, who put on a fantastic costume, uh, contest, and, uh, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Patty.
It, we, it was actually fun.
Kids love it, you know that, that's the reason we all do it.
I, we, we think we can improve it for another year, to maybe get the word out better, but I was pleased with the turnout, and we had some really cute costumes, I mean.
Good.
And some spooky scary ones.
The winner in particular.
Yeah. The baseball, the injured baseball player was kinda creepy.
It was creepy.
But, that was Brittany Finney, she got first place in the adults.
Oh, really?
She was an injured baseball player, you heard, I posted the pictures on my feed, and, uh, but you'll be, you need to look at hers.
Have her leg, have her leg going backwards or something, did she?
No, she just had this ball right in her face.
That, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, being one who's been clobbered like that, I can imagine how I feel, so, anything else, Tom?
Nope, that's it.
I will, I will, I didn't get a chance to mention you, I had a long talk with, um, and I'm gonna send it to you with Scott Ware and the, uh.
Paper Products.
Paper Products, and about trying to use their business coming to help you with your, um, study for the motel.
Oh, okay.
I knew you talked about getting the folks out at, um, Motorcycle Club invested along with a new business coming, if they can, said they can help you in any way, shape, or form with any information with that, like, motorcycle. Will somebody tell him that I pointed him, I can fire his ass?
Motocross.
Thank you. They could have a club out there, oh, yeah, so, yeah, I think that'd be helpful out in any way, shape, or form, they're willing to do it, so, so go from there, okay, Mr. Craig, sir, you got the floor?
All I wanna say is that trick-or-treat went well, uh, I noticed we have a, a large uptick on trick-or-treaters, so we're gonna have to adjust our.
What we do?
Yeah.
What are you thinking about it, you got a year?
Down on the Eighth Street, I've had so many people wanting to cross behind me instead of in front, so I'm gonna have to resituate that.
What do we set, what do we set your vehicles for that?
Right, right at Eighth and Main.
Eighth and Main, okay.
And so we get people to turn, keep traffic moving.
Right.
It, uh, there's some people who's added some, turning their lights on now, so now they're going past us, and so I'm trying to get people to cross in front of us' car instead of behind us.
I got you, now work on what you need to, we need to, if we need to set an extra vehicle or two down there to, you know, use for blocking, we can, we got them available. So, okay, that works.
Yeah, I just, this time, we, I just brought some more people down to my end, and they were taking care of the people crossing, and I was taking care of the cars moving.
Okay. And, for your information, I did talk with the individual that does the, um, safety training for the utility boys. Ed. Yeah, that one. Yeah, I, he did tell me that he is willing to come some evening, after your volunteers get off work, and have a class for them in flagging and safety, and get certifications for them, which I don't think would be a bad idea, would, I, I think Lou, the, the utility boys, that they had instruction in flagging and that stuff.
Yeah, the street department guys went through it.
Okay, so it's the same, but the same guy did it?
Yes.
So, did you go through it?
No, we have not.
Okay, so, but I think the program'd be worthwhile, not that I, not that I don't have faith in your folks doing it, but I think formal training from a proper institution would be great, so, one of these days, mention it to your folks, and let you and I get together and try to set up a, a date, I think the training is two hours.
Okay.
So, if, if, if your guys get off work at five, we can do it from six to eight some evening and, in here, and, and be done with it, but I think it'd be a good idea, so, your opinion, would you think that'd be worthwhile?
Yes, I've had a couple already ask about it.
Okay, good, well, then you talk to them, and then let's get a time, get a time to do it. Okay, anything else, sir?
No.
Unfinished business, do we have any?
New business?
No.
No new business.
No new business, unfinished business, I skipped one, did I? All right, we just had a city hall committee meeting, um, most of us were here, but go ahead and fill out the business.
First thing is, I forgot to put the date on the paper, so, I noticed that after I made copies, I passed it out, so if everybody wants to make sure, you can make sure that your original guarantee has the figures on there, but. Um, so, city hall committee, Matt, for possible remodel of the front area where the collectors are at, um, Ryan had some nice blueprints, you guys that weren't in it should have them, should have, uh, existing and proposed, pretty much the, the biggest things to see is, uh, taking the two storage closets and making it one, so that it's more user-friendly for them, moving the desks and counters forward, giving them five foot of space behind the desk instead of the three foot they work in now, and then there's some pictures of kinda what it'd look like, um, Olivia at one window, Kelly at the other, and then the wheelchair accessible one in the middle will be an access, so if they get a lot of people in, Gail or Jeremy or somebody can come sit in there, whatever. We made the decision to move forward and put on the agenda to move forward with taking bids to get the process rolling and get it finished.
The girls, Gail, Kelly, and, and Olivia, worked with Ryan to formulate, adjust what we had in the past, come up with the drawing, and I think it's to the point now, we need to, um, go ahead and, and let it be brought to the next council meeting to approve, um, some plans, get some plans, so we can put bids out, get the plans first, and then we'll get the, be able to put it out for bids, but our next step is to get it approved for planning and go from there at our next meeting, so, and the drawings, he's already, uh, Ryan's got with us, so we, we'll be good to go, we'll be good to go there, so, any questions? Okay, do I wanna do that now, or do I wanna do that after our review?
Whatever. So, you can get your course first, I like at the end.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. I'm gonna go back to some new business, but let's do our ultimate reports first, uh, Tanner, you got anything to need to speak?
So, I was approached, uh, by someone back in high school, um, they were curious if we had ordinance, uh, to dig a shallow well, um, so, they are, uh, they have a lot of exotic plants, and so the city water has a lot of chlor- chlorine in it, and it's not good for their, their garden, so they asked if they could dig a well or have a well professionally brought in to have a spigot put on it.
Good question, can't tell you, have to do some research, that's not one.
Brain murals.
In St. Illinois, it is illegal to collect water.
Imagine, imagine, man.
So.
You get caught.
Yeah, but, no, I'll, let, let's, I have to look, honestly, that's not one that you have off the top of your head as far as ordinances, so.
And so, I'm, you know, I wasn't even, didn't even know where to begin to look.
Well, that's.
I did look through the ordinance a little bit, um, but there was nothing stating that we could or could, uh, but I just wanted to.
Let me, let me send, let me send that one out, let Jeremy and I send that out to Tracy tomorrow, as far as, where, I mean.
Yeah.
Can we do, we, or we have to draw one up, you know, what do we do, I, I mean, as long as it's somewhere where it's not interfering with our. Utilities or anything like that, I can't imagine it being much of a problem, I just don't know how, I don't know how shallow the water table is where we're at.
It depends, I mean, they, they obviously have to get in a sputter truck to come in and put in a six inch core, more than likely, um, but, you know, the only way I could see this may come into issue as far as, are they gonna run it to their house, and we know a lot of utilities from that.
Yeah.
So, what could we do to allow someone to do that, but, you know, have it, something drawn up to say has to be for.
Tell that individual, we don't know, but you brought it up to the mayor and the clerk, and we're gonna get the information to get back.
Okay.
Might take us a little bit, but that's.
Well, at least I think we're gonna do it till spring, if that's fine.
Can the worms, like.
Yeah, yeah, I just said, let's look and see what.
By God, if you drill a well, I'll do it. By God, if you drill a well, I'll do it.
Yeah, the pros, like he said, we have to keep, make sure it doesn't interfere with our public utility works and go from there.
Right.
I understand what they're asking for.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so that, the other thing they may have to do is if we can't do that, find a way to distill what they've got, but I know the water they've got is free of any compounds other than the chlorine.
Yeah, let's say, I've, I've had plenty of yellow from it.
Yeah, yeah, but I said other than the chlorine, as far as the other chemicals that was in the old water.
Sure.
One, I don't have a third head, much of that stuff is I drank in the past, but we'll, we'll see, we shall find out.
All right, thank you, uh, that's all I have for you.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
Hi.
Ms. Wilson?
Um, the only thing I have is, it's been a while since we've got a report from the Business District and all that, can we get another one of those?
Yeah, 'cause we're still trying to get the monies figured out and what we do, I know we're working on getting the, uh, eligibility requirements drawn up for the, uh, that's what I'll say, the, uh, new size of funds, yeah, and that, we're hoping to get that ready to go so we can start accepting, I know Tom and Tracy are working on some of that stuff, but you're talking about the actual figures for the district itself, the monthly figures or what?
Well, we used to get a report that would say, I don't know that it was monthly.
Quarterly or whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, I, Gail, Gail can, Gail can look, see what we got, and go from there.
That's all I have.
Okay, yeah, we can do that, Gail, let me know, please. Jeremiah?
I've missed a little.
Marcy?
I just have been asked a lot about the leave back schedule, I assume that's coming up?
The what?
Leave back?
Yes, yeah.
I think, yeah, I think they're waiting to most of them fall and do it sparingly, so.
Most of those questions come from within my home.
The source is closed, in other words, I have to.
Okay, thank you.
I can understand how that can be a priority there, sweetheart.
Is it working out?
We can, we can get that in the works, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Carleen, then.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, I've got something I wanna discuss, but we're gonna have to go into executives, this say, say?
Session.
That's the one.
So, Mike is asking for approval to go into executive session for discussion of the following subjects pursuant to five ILCS one twenty slash two, collective bargaining section, section two, C two. That's what Mike just said.
I'll just say, yeah.